All right, we are live.
Walter.
Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 PM. Today is Monday, December 16, 2024. I've called to order this regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Prospect, Kentucky. First item of business, oh, first item of business is several introductions. I want to introduce, we have a lot of distinguished guests here this evening, but I'm going to introduce three of them. First is Mike Sutt, who's the Deputy Chief of the Anchorage-Middletown Fire Department, which provides service here in Prospect. We appreciate the service that you provide and we appreciate you being here this evening, Chief.
May I interject and say it was the ambulance service from your all, your all's district that saved my life in 2015? So I appreciate.
And also want to introduce former council member Greg Huesman, who's in attendance. Greg, we appreciate you being here. And Sandra Leonard, also a former member of the council, and she will be rejoining us on January 1st, 2025. So we look forward to that. With that said, the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the November 18, 2024 regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
I had a correction on the adjournment line. It says council culture instead of council person culture, council member culture. We just add bad member there.
Okay, make that correction with with that correction. Are there any other additions or corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes amended? Okay, is there a second? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is comments from citizens. And Mr. Huesman, you're on the list, so we look forward to hearing your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, everyone. Greg Huesman, 7210, Hunter Farm Drive, I'm simply in here in Prospect. And good evening, I saw that we had a couple of financial matters on the agenda tonight, so I wanted to show up for that. So the first thing that you all are the one to talk about, that I wasn't about, that you have tonight is with regard to the compensation for yourselves with the council members, even though they'll take it back until, I guess, 2027. But still, so I wanted to talk about this because I was the one who introduced the ordinance back when it was a hundred dollars. And when I was a council member, frankly, when I came in, I didn't even know there was compensation. So I found out it was a hundred dollars a month, and so that was fine for a while. And so what I found out, though, that by the time I spent gasoline and put gasoline in the car to go to JCLC meetings and sign ink and toner and all that paper for my, I was spending more than a hundred dollars. So I didn't mind giving my time, but I didn't feel like it should cost me. So I brought the the ID up to the council, and it was increased rather dramatically, more than I thought, to 250. So we went from a hundred to 250. So what is on the discussion tonight is doubling back to five hundred dollars. So what I wanted to say about that was, again, so you just go back. I think most of us want to give back to this great city. What I like to say a lot is that I don't just live in Prospect, I get to live in Prospect. So for me, it was giving back, wasn't about making money. So I ask you to consider that. When you look at the overall budget, it's a drop in the bucket. I think it's an additional eighteen thousand dollars that the city will expend for for the difference there. So but I would say if you watch the pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves. So I ask you to think about that when you vote tonight. The second thing I want to talk about is the personnel policy. I had the privilege of working on that when I was on the council. It's a huge policy. There's a lot in it. And I think the last time the council approved it was almost 30 years ago. So what I want to do is make sure that you all give it the due diligence, so that you really know what's in it. And be tenement to driving up and looking at a house from the street and saying, okay, I want to buy that house. It might be a couple of million dollar house. But if you don't know what's inside of it, and you don't know what was done to it and how it was retained, you probably wouldn't buy that house. So I ask you to do that tonight as you as you look at the personnel policy. It's a very, very complicated document, and there is a lot of money associated with it. So I hope you will. I don't think there's any urgency to approve it tonight. So I hope you will take time to make sure you know what it means to improve it, go through that. I also want to, as the mayor brought up, a couple of people here, Sarah and Frank are falling off of the council. I want to thank all of you all for giving your time and talent, and appreciate it very much, everyone of you. But also sincere and frank, you guys are, this is your last meeting, I want to say thank you. I know the people of Prospect appreciate all that you've done. And I watch you on the on the YouTube, and so I come all the time, and I know what you have done. I know you work hard and prepare for these meetings, so thank you for that. Lastly, I just want to say Merry Christmas. It's really a pleasure to know all of you all, work with all of you all. Happy New Year, and see you everybody in the audience as well, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate that. So next item is my report, the mayor's report. I'm going to report briefly on six items of interest. First and foremost, as Greg mentioned, this evening marks the final regular council meeting for two esteemed council members, Frank Fulcher and Sarah Hines. Both Frank and Sarah have made significant contributions to the council and to the city, and they will be missed. I extend my personal thanks to both Frank and Sarah for their courtesy and good humor. I consider both of them to be my friends, and I look forward to interacting with them in the future. Second, on November 24th, Prospect Park sponsored a Trail Bash run in Heritage Creek Park. The event was a big success, and I extend the city's thanks to Tina Bevan for her hard work in planning and executing the event. The Trail Bash provided a good opportunity for Prospect to showcase the new pedestrian stream crossing bridge that provides an attractive and functional connection between the west and east ends of Heritage Creek Park. Third, I previously reported that the Prospect-Goshen Rotary Foundation awarded a $5,000 grant to the city to help us promote and encourage recycling. We are working with Professor Jason Polk from Western Kentucky University and two of his students on this project. On November 23rd, Saturday, November 23rd, the professor and the two students visited Prospect, toured the city, and met with Prospect residents, including Linda Wardell, who's present. Linda Knox, I think, was here also. There's also present Abby Potter, the youth member of our Parks Committee, Janet Hayden. Several Rotarians were here, and we appreciate their attendance and certainly appreciate the grant that they provided. So we worked during that visit on beginning to plan the project. Rumkey advises that approximately 45% of our residents recycle, and we have established a goal to increase that to 60% by June 30 of 2025. So it may be an ambitious goal, but we think it's worthy, and we're hopeful that we'll achieve that. Fourth, on December 12th, Chief Denham and Assistant Chief McKeon joined me and other senior staff members in a meeting with the Executive Director of Eastern Louisville Community Ministries. The city will be working with EACM to ensure that Prospect residents who may benefit benefit from that organization's services will have that opportunity. The best known of EACM's services is the delivery of meals to individuals who may have difficulty preparing their own meals. We have scheduled a further meeting for March 10 to move this project forward. Fifth, on Thursday of this week, so three days from now, the Chase Bank Branch on Timber Ridge Drive will have a ribbon cutting to celebrate the opening of the branch. The ribbon cutting will take place at nine o'clock AM, and Chase has indicated that its doors will be open on Thursday at 8:30 AM. Everyone's invited to attend. Finally, on December 12th, the Courier-Journal reported that a grocery chain had submitted a development plan to Louisville's Metro Office of Planning for the Prospect Point Shopping Center. The article noted that Publix had previously made a request for zoning verification, and the article noted that Publix may be the entity that filed the development plan. The city has been in touch with the developer, and we will, and we look forward to working with him and his colleagues on this exciting new project for Prospect. So that concludes my report. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the financial reports. John?
I'm summarizing November 24 financials. I'll start with cash on hand. We have approximately 4.2 million in our investment funds and another $250,000 in our checking, for a total of 4.4 million dollars, of which 2.8 million is unrestricted. Interest earned currently on investments for the this fiscal year totals 70, almost $77,000. At this date, we have collected approximately 74% of all our income for the year, budgeted income, and have expended about 47% of our budget expenditures. The restricted road aid fund currently is at $181,000. And we did wrap up the Capital Project Fund. The Heritage Creek Bridge Project wrapped up with the final pouring of concrete pads on either side of the bridge. We came under budget by about $2,400. We had originally budgeted $180,000. That capital fund budget now has a balance of $125,000. If you might have any questions?
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is a report from the Ethics Commission. John Embry.
Thank you, Mayor. I did submit a report, we're gonna sit there, sure there. It is required. In life, so so I figure orally. We did not have any ethics issues due portion here, and we did not, basically means. Couple of things that that have occurred, I believe he was on the commission currently, his term is expiring, he has agreed to accept another term, and that is on your chip. And Nick Nicholson and Susan are leaving Prospect. And moving down to the house. So the mayor suggested that they adjourn again. Right there. He didn't say, or certain court judge, and so I think that's a next very good candidate, certainly support that as a position. We do have an argument, it's kind of an argument, but with only three other some of the commission can handle it. It makes sense to have somebody who could set we have enough in the event. Me. If I will remind you, I should also remind you of all that about January 1st. The ethics financial exposure forms for 2025 become and they will be due no later than March, the first, first, first business day in March, which is March. Well, the only thing I would say to folks on that, please pay particular attention to the instructions in each section, because invariably in all systems, and we use some more information than I need. And I don't need details on mutual blood sale, that that kind of thing. So other than that, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John regarding the ethics?
I'm available, but if anybody has has questions, I can go out. You've been getting to me, but I've not been.
Thank you. Appreciate your efforts and appreciate your report. Next item on the agenda is the Forestation Board Report. Linda Knox is here.
I hope everybody had a great tree giddy, because we had a great tree giddy on November. Right before Thanksgiving, we planted 18 canopy trees in the community. We also planted the Mike Collins Memorial Tree out in Louisville Creek Park. So we were very pleased, it went very smoothly, and we actually had one or should be, seventy, eighty miles, and anyhow smoothly they they gone, and they were very pleased. So we will start another canopy program for the spring, and we're going to have information on the day of the tree, probably until January or early February, but we'll be hearing more about that soon. Coming up, we will be meeting with the mayor and my council to talk about evidence tree communication and implementation. And probably the biggest concern are the many David and Brad prepared trees in the landings. Some of them may have leaves, they may look healthy, but on closer inspection, you're going to see signs that be a construction probably it's not mistaken. So this is something that we need to involve that community in, and have them be proactive before things really cause problems. So there'll be an article on the Brad prepared trees in the the next newsletter. In fact, they've been, our go plant with us for some years, but those are done long ago, and their time has come gone. So we will be working with that community to make it safer. And last but not least, we're working on our tree sitting USA application. It's due by the end of the month, but we've got most of the information collected, so we can start them to perform. And, you know, assuming fingers crossed, and maybe by the end, it will be number seventeen. So good for us, all the people that don't take that happen. That's my report. Any questions?
Any questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda. I appreciate all your efforts. The the Canopy Tree Program's been stepped up this year in response to the tornado and all the trees that we lost. So we're making an effort to reestablish the wonderful tree canopy that we have. All right, next item on the agenda is Jefferson County League of Cities, Don Gibson.
No meeting in December, nothing will report.
Okay. That's very nice. Thank you. Linda Wardell, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
So my report is also very short. We did not meet this month. We will be back meeting again in January. But I I wanted to echo the mayor's comments about success, the trail ranch. This fall, you may remember that we did not hold it last year, and we had a couple of years. One year virtual and one year canceled with all the code stuff. So we're really happy to get things back this year. And Tina Bevan is an amazing woman. She did a great job finding, she found a new race timing company that would work with us, helped coordinate volunteers, signage for the trails, of course, Ron Pundin and his crew did a great job of getting the trails in wonderful shape for that event. And there were 70 participants. We were a little concerned about whether we'd get a good crowd. And it was a little slow in the sign up, but in the end, 70 participants is pretty good. And after all expenses, there will be more than $1,000 in proceeds that will come to support the Prospect Parks. So we're very pleased with that. Also, we checked your newsletter the next week or whenever it comes out, the end of this week, next week. I've got a little retrospective this year for the parks events, and it has been a gang of us compared to the parks. Lots of events, lots of community participation. It's it's just been wonderful. And we're planning next year. And the first thing that we have to announce is that we're already vote for Chase during the parks. And they will be presenting on April 27th. And the play will be bad. I don't know. I guess I can say in this room.
Absolutely.
I couldn't say that. But we are looking forward to another great year with parks programs and any questions?
Thank you, Linda. We appreciate it. Appreciate all your work. Parks are, somebody mentioned today, they're crown jewel of the city, which I think is is a very true, true statement. Tony Denham, police report.
Yes, sir. Wanted to report, we were able to hire an officer. I appreciate John Carter, the mayor's patience with my insanity during November. Working diligently, trying to make sure, doing all the background work, getting all that done, make sure we get somebody in the door. Because can't do the work, you don't have to be. So I really appreciate you guys being patient with me, letting me get that done during November. So Officer Barbara Shepherd, who spent time at Metro, she left there, spent the rest of her time in St. Matthew's. She'll be a wonderful addition. She's on day work. She's got a lot of skills, investigative skills. She's a great human being, first and foremost, so we're very lucky. So that has helped tremendously. I really want to commend our guys for the amount of citations and the work they put in during the month when we were extremely short. Last month, there's no way around it. We were extremely short, we weren't able to get her in until December 7th. And if you see the guys from time to time, sitting at certain spots, we're putting in for a grant, preliminary work, preliminary work on that grant. We're doing seatbelt surveys, so if you see them sitting in a certain spot up by the smiter at different lights or different stations there for an extended period of time, we're viewing cars to see seatbelt usage, and that way it gives us a little bit of a baseline going into that. So if you see them, that's what they're doing. They're looking to see seatbelt usage. We've emphasized being in shopping areas during all the retail areas during the holiday times. We've had zero incidents, knock on wood. So that's been great. So if you see the guys, they're going to be out over in Probert, over in the east, over in our other areas, anywhere where there's people and patrons, you'll see the guys out there. So I appreciate the guy being a visible presence as well on that. We only had one vehicle break in last month, not one, which is outstanding. And that was unlocked vehicle in the park. Lady had came back, it was at Heritage Creek Park, she was walking the trails, came back to put something in her car, and honestly, just totally forgot to lock it back when she came by. And nobody misses that, apparently, sometimes in the park. So she did, as we credit park stolen. During this time of the year, usually at police departments, you see an uptick in two different things. Disputes, family disputes, mental health crisis. We kind of have a little bit of both. We have had a little bit of an uptick. We had an issue up here at Heritage Bridge, up here. Real early in the morning, there was a female that had gained access to the garage area that had the code. That's not a well-known code. Somebody talked to somebody, they had met a female online. Nobody would cop to this, to say anything. But she had gained access to the inside of the building. When the officers got there, she's from Louisiana, stopped off up here, there's no way, she just came up with the code. And somebody had talked to her. We ended up taking her to a hospital for with crisis intervention thing. So the gist of that, don't talk to people online and invite them and give them the code, say anything. I don't know any other way to say it. But the guys did a tremendous job. I recognized that immediately, getting up there really quick, getting her out of there and getting her to the hospital. So I truly, truly appreciate it. We almost are done completely with our changeover of patches. We have new patches for the uniformed guys. And the city tailor over here is probably one of the nicest guys I've ever met in my life. The most humble, hardworking man I've ever met in my life, that I think we're going to have to do a reverse robbery on to pay him. It's literally, we're going to have to knock on the door and throw money in. He is such a good man. If you ever have anything that you need done, that man is a tremendous human being. We really appreciate him. I want to say a sincere thank you to Frank and Sarah. You guys have been so good to work with. And our job is, I've said before, my job is to serve these citizens, and your job is to help me do my job to do that. And I couldn't do anyway, I have way decent job with that, you too. So thank you, and your your time and your efforts, really appreciate it. I mean that. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Tony?
Mayor is, which I'd like to, while we're talking about the police, mention a scam that's going around. And I know because I got the scam, it's during the Christmas holidays, there the email came to me and said, we need a an address verification for a package that's supposed to be sent to me. And I said, well, I had ordered some things online, and some of them hadn't arrived yet. And I said, okay, I better look at this. So I looked at it, and it came up as a very official looking United States Post Office of form, and it was telling you had to fill it out. And of course, at the very end, after filling everything out online, it says, but you owe 17 cents. Give us your credit card. So I immediately said, no, and Xed out of it, but went to the post office to ask him if there was anything legitimate about it otherwise. They said that is a scam that's going around, the postal inspectors are investigating it, but be careful. Don't give anybody your credit card out. They said they never do anything email wise like that. You know, you get a slip in the box, your mailbox saying, please come to the office, we've got a problem. I just wanted to mention that.
And to echo that, this is a great device, but is a scammer's dream. If you get anything on this and you're not sure of it, you you call us, if you come up here, we will take it. I don't care what's going to do, if you call us, you come up here, because it's worth asking whether this is legit or not. And here's the deal. If you, if it was something you needed to pay and it was late, that's totally fine. If it's a scam, it's going to cost you a lot of time, a lot of money during that time. If you have any questions, it's never bothering us. You pick the phone up, you drive up here, anytime, we will know. Because it's not worth getting scammed, and they are good. They're really, really good. That's a very, that's a great point.
Hey, thank you. Tony, appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. A second reading of Ordinance 646, Series 2024, and Ordinance Amending, Chapter 32, the Code of Ordinances regarding compensation for council members for the city of Prospect. This proposed ordinance received a first reading at last month's regular meeting, and it's up for a second reading this evening. Is there a motion to give Ordinance 646 a second reading?
So move.
Mr. Holmes moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Clark seconded. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I I want to say I've been opposed to this when it came up. And I still am, because I think it's an arbitrary number that you can't substantiate, and it's really not a good deal for our citizens. And I still am, because I think it's an arbitrary number that you can't substantiate, and it's really not a good deal for our citizens. But I've said that before, so that's it.
Okay, thanks, Frank. Other uh comments or questions?
So I did substantiate it by getting information from the Kentucky League of Cities um and took all of the cities that were in Jefferson County that reported um to the Kentucky City Cities what they were paying their council people. And had a population less than Prospect. And Frank did point out that some of those potentially could have been city commission form, and they do pay their people more for doing that extra kind of work. Took all those out. Still, the average of the cities that have a less population that reported to Kentucky League of Cities what they were paying them was four hundred and sixty some odd dollars a month. Um and that's not gonna be in twenty twenty seven dollars that we have now. So that's where we came up with the five hundred dollar figure uh to do. So it does have some some back into it. Part of the other thinking that we've had and discussed with the council about this is the need to get a more diverse field for council elections, not just us who are retired and have the time to put into it, but people like Sarah and Christine um who is coming on to our, or Christian who is coming on to our council, who are employed and have a different point of view and an understanding that the citizens have. And with our population becoming younger in Prospect, which is really the case, we need that point of view made on the policymaking level. And I think to do that, you're gonna have to pay people a little bit more than two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Thank you, David, are there any other comments or questions from anyone?
I I'm not sure that that the extra two hundred and fifty dollars a month is gonna be important to the citizens of Prospect, whether or not they participate in this. Uh I I think the critical factor is time, their time, and anyone's working full time as a this is what we do up here is just a typical iceberg in terms of that. And anyone that's working full time, really difficult time, I think, Sarah, if you experienced that. Good for you, yes, yes.
Okay, um are we ready to vote? Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh I'll ask, I'll call the roll, ask um Sarah Hines.
Yes.
Okay, Don Gibson?
No.
John Evans?
Yes.
David Holmes?
Yes.
John Clark?
Yes.
And Frank Fulcher?
No.
So I didn't listen as closely as I should have, I think of of past five forty two. And I'm uh I'm not certain, I think it'd probably be prudent or safe to read the title of the ordinance again, David, if you would do that.
City Prospect Kentucky Order Number Six Forty Six, Series Twenty Twenty Four. An ordinance, chapter thirty two of Prospect Code of Municipal Ordinances Regarding Compensation for Council Members of the City of Prospect Taking the Current Salary of Two Hundred and Fifty Dollars a Month to Five Hundred Dollars a Month in January first of June twenty seven.
Thank you. The next item uh on the agenda are um really two municipal orders. Um the first municipal order nine, series twenty twenty four, would consent to the nomination by me of Todd Everly to serve on the City of Prospect Ethics Commission that John Embry um alluded to earlier. So is there a motion to approve that municipal order?
So.
Thanks, um Sarah Hines made the motion, John Clark seconded, is there a discussion? If not, um we'll call the roll, Frank Fulcher?
Yes.
John Clark?
Yes.
David Holmes?
Yes.
John Evans?
Yes.
Don Gibson?
Yeah.
Sarah Hines. Right, yeah. Former Mayor Everly is approved by a vote of six zero as a member of the uh continuing member of the Ethics Ethics Commission. Next is municipal order ten, that's an order consenting to the nomination by me of this uh of David Jernigan to serve on the City of Prospect Ethics Commission and fixing a term of office there too. Is there a motion to approve that municipal order?
So move.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Fulcher made the motion, Mr. Evans seconded, is there a discussion? If not, we'll uh call the roll again, Frank Fulcher?
Yes.
John Clark?
Yes.
David Holmes?
Yes.
John Evans?
Yes.
Don Gibson?
Yes.
Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved by a vote of six zero also. The next item on the agenda is uh has to do with the city's um employee handbook. And that municipal order eleven, series twenty twenty four, in order amending the personnel policy for the city of Prospect. And this has been discussed for some time, actually going back to when when I was a council member. And uh and I know there's been a lot of discussion of it uh more recently. I'm gonna ask, uh I guess first I'll ask for a motion to approve that municipal order.
So move.
Mr. Evans made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Clark seconded. And uh before we start discussion, I'm gonna ask John Carter to make some remarks about this, about this municipal order.
Well, just to uh recap what I said last month, um and as stated in the order itself, um Mayor Evans had adopted the majority of the proposed handbook by executive order back in twenty twenty as it relates to policy. Uh what remained were a few financial items, of course, that are the uh council's prerogative. Um those were not adopted, so uh I've been working off some older policy. Uh some of it not really implemented properly. And um it's difficult for me uh explain to employees what the policy is because I don't have uh one concise coherent um document that uh outlines exactly what policy is. So what I had proposed at the last meeting was that I document from the financial perspective, those parts of the handbook that had not been adopted to reflect what currently occurs. This is not the policy proposed by KLC back in twenty twenty. This is a policy as it operates today. I understand that in in the discussions we've had here in the last month, that there are concerns about some parts of that policy. And legitimately so from my own perspective. However, uh of course, the council is at liberty to to make any of those changes at any time. I would like at least um going forward in the new year to at least have an established policy that is in one document that I can point to because we are making new hires right now. Um that at least documents what occurs today. We amended it slightly from what I initially put in the council packet because there is a question about there not being any caps on sick pay. And as uh Councilman Gibson pointed out, that could be uh a grave concern to somebody who uh has a long tenure here at the city. Um so what we have done in this particular order is uh delayed the implementation of that particular component of the um these pay sick leave policy till March to give us additional time to to hammer that out. Um of course, if it's not hammered out, then that policy remains, but um I think I think I've addressed everything, but I'm certainly here to answer any questions.
Let me make just a few remarks. I wholeheartedly support this effort. John told me about his own experience when he became the clerk, and he asked the question, well, where's where's the employee handbook? And um his predecessor in that position was hard pressed to say, part of the reason that she was leaving was that the council had never adopted the handbook. So her frustration was evident. I think John has been frustrated for the years that he's been here. Uh we have a uh we have procedures in place that have been adopted and through various means over a period of many years. Uh we are operating on the policies that we believe exist. But we think it's time for the council to uh back us up and say uh these are the this is the policy manual for the city of Prospect, even in connection with the uh the various financial matters. As we've gone through this this process, it's it shows the importance of cleaning this up. Because Don Gibson pointed out some uh real weaknesses in the current city's current sick leave policy. Uh and that that needs to be addressed. But uh we're we're playing with Play-Doh uh when we're doing this without something that's in place. So the way this is drafted, the the uh parts of the handbook that we believe are straightforward, that exists currently that we believe are straightforward and not controversial, we approve those. Uh we asked the council to consider approving those with an effective date of January one, twenty twenty five. The portion of the uh of the pilot of the current policy that relates to sick pay, we're asking the council that the council's action of that is it becomes effective March thirty first of twenty twenty five, which would provide the new council, this council and the new council more than ninety days to uh make improvements to that section of the of the policy. So this has been provided to all the council, John has met with various council members. Uh I've talked to various council members, and uh it's on the agenda this evening for 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 discussion and for and for a vote. So with that said, is there further discussion on the municipal order eleven?
Yeah.
Frank?
Yeah, I'm uh you know, familiar with the the sick leave a- and uh I think it's pretty straightforward what Don submitted and gave all of us. And it it's pretty uh pretty interesting. I I think that it's also pretty straightforward, that particular that particular item, unless I unless I'm missing something. I mean, it's just a a little phraseology that would uh define the half at the end of the year. To say that it only counts for that's that specific year would solve much of that problem, is that correct? Instead of having to carry over, you get half of it, accrued carryover, instead of being able to carry over and then carry over and then in instead of having the multiplier effect.
Multipliers.
The multipliers.
Well, and it's also lack of cap.
But if we limit it.
Cap.
But if we limit it.
Okay, we're gonna go one to ten. Mr. Fulcher's got the floor.
Yeah, but if we limit it to that specific year that you couldn't carry from previous year. That year, at the end of the year, you have two, you haven't used two. You get half of those the next year, but you don't get that, that doesn't count for the following year. I think that's pretty straightforward. And that I think that's the intent. I don't know whether that's the way you read it, John.
The the problems, the problem.
Okay, Mr. Holmes?
The problem with what Frank is saying is that it gives the the employee, and I'm not trying to cast dispersions of money in our employees because they're all good, good people, but it gives the employees the incentive to use the sick leave in that one year. Because it doesn't, nothing carries over, there isn't any advantage um financially to them to keep coming to work and not use sick leave and then be able to be paid out. Real problem I see is the cap that that Don pointed out, and we've got to have a cap on that, otherwise we'll get killed. And I've never worked, I've worked to, this is the third different organization that I've been involved in. Every one of them, municipal organizations have had a cap on the sick leave.
That could be accumulated.
Yes, well, I I agree with, I I agree with the cat. However, um it it's just kind of a sticky widget when you're talking about sick leave. You don't want sick people coming to work because they're generally less productive, and they can also infect the the rest of the rest of your group. Nor on the other side of it, do you want to provide them with sufficient incentive? So even if they are sick, I'm gonna say, I'm not coming to work, I'm coming to work at the end of the year so they could get that bonus for getting everybody else sick. So I think uh there's a balance that has to be struck with that particular that particular thing. So I I think that uh you know, limited limiting it to that that specific year, you can carry over.
But let me say, um these are good comments. The the um motion that's on the floor is for us to, for the council to act to uh validate our existing policy. And this is not, uh we we don't have before us anything to amend it and improve it, which I think we all agree is necessary and needed. So uh the comments are good comments, but they're they they're not really germane to the completely germane to the question of whether the council is going to um ratify what's already in place with with it and understanding that the effective date of the council's action would be the end of March. So there's nine, more than ninety days for the council to uh deal with Frank's comments, Don's comments, David's comments, and all the concerns that all of us have about the way the sick pay. Uh and the the good thing about getting this on the on the agenda and and discussed is I didn't know we had this problem, and that, you know, I think the fact that we've got this before is what led on to study it, and and I'm very appreciative, I think we all are. Okay, yeah, Sarah?
Replay what I think I heard, okay? So my understanding is what we're dealing with today is just moralizing what is already in practice.
Correct.
Okay, so so we do have, we can amend, and all of these discussions can definitely be enriched as we move forward. But right now, what they're trying to do for John, you're just trying to moralize what is already in practice. So at least when the new employees come on board, you at least can hand them something, this is how how we're doing it.
That's correct.
Awesome, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
With there, and we're including uh the sick sick pay the way it is now until.
Correct, well, until the council acts.
Okay.
So I we've we we extended it, or the effective date of the council's action, not of the policy, the policy exists, but the effective date of the council's action is March thirty first. But the council between now and then at any time can can act to uh improve that policy.
Or change it.
Or change it.
Or change it.
Yeah.
Or memorializing, whatever term you want to use.
Right.
Is there, is there a legal, a potential legal issue with the way it's worded now? Significant, it could be significant.
I think uh as a recovering lawyer, I'll comment, uh I I I have no doubt that uh every judge in America, and a very distinguished former judge is uh is here with us. But the the uh existing policies that we have in writing in the course of dealing, I think establishes our policy. I don't think there's any question about that. I think it, I think the city might try to challenge that and say, oh, no, we really didn't mean that to be our policy, or it wasn't approved in exactly the right way. But my strong belief is that that a court would enforce what we're doing now.
The the words or what we're actually?
What we're doing. Yeah, which are which are written down, I mean, it's not these words, we didn't make these words up, they're written in in executive uh orders.
You know, I I will, I'm specifically uh addressing the section that that Don has done the financial analysis.
Correct, that's correct.
That we're not doing that, is that correct?
We are doing that. We we are, that is the current policy. That that's the current policy.
But but Mayor, I assume that John will tell any new hire that that could be changed between now and March thirty first.
Well, I'll tell every new hire that anything can change, really.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, is there further discussion, any questions? If not, uh we're we're ready to vote, Mr. Fulcher?
Yes.
And Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
And Miss?
Yes.
Okay, that uh municipal order is approved by a vote of six zero, and we'll look forward to improving the section on uh on sick. Leave it. Not mistaken. If that actually includes the agenda, I do think uh it'd be appropriate for us to take another moment and for Frank and Sarah for any uh any valedictory address you might want to make, Sarah?
Yes, I um I I appreciate it, though I think we read the title of, okay, God, okay. Uh I want to just um not get emotional, but I want to thank um each and every one of you for just a wonderful experience. I um I consider myself blessed and fortunate to have not only served with each and every one of you, but um on path to City Prospect. I was, I'm honored, I was honored to be elected, I'm honored to have served for two years. And um I've been sitting nothing but the best, and I'm not going anymore. So you'll still see me around possibly in different capacities. So I thank you um for having faith in me initially, and I thank you for the opportunity you have served.
Thanks, Sarah.
Frank, the tough act to follow. I, I feel the same way that, that Sarah does, but I want to let everybody know I have the highest respect for the people who run for office. It's just not an easy job. And to present yourself, sometimes a little difficulty is, is part of it. And I want to say I have utmost respect for the Lindas and John and the people who for nothing work so hard for this community and make it what it is. So thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Before we adjourn, I've been reminded that we could read the last municipal order. So I will do that. Municipal order eleven that the council has approved this evening by a vote of six zero. Order eleven of series twenty twenty-four, in order amending the personnel policy for the city of Prospect. The order adds and updates the City of Prospect Employee Handbook to include Section Three, General Employment Policy and Rules, Section Five, Employee Financial Practices, Reporting and Reimbursement, Section Six, Classification and Compensation, Section Seven, Health Retirement and Other Benefits, and Section Eight, Paid and Unpaid Leaves. So I get that right, that's we're good. All right. With that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sarah, go ahead.
All in favor, please say aye. You're adjourned. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Absolutely.
Frank's been playing. Thank you.
David, you were right.
I hope to see you in the future.